Today, so we do have quorum. There are no cases on the agenda, nor are there people in attendance that to administer an oath for today. So we've skipped both those items and moved right along into communications. Communications, we're continuing to discuss as part of a component of our strategic planning for the year is the moving forward of the sign ordinance recommendations towards city council. Last week, I'd like to thank Paskey for preparing all the -- providing us with all the legal documents from the sign ordinance appeal that a lot of our recommendations come from, from 1998 and its subsequent discussion in the appellate courts and the Court of Common Pleas. I believe all of us have had an opportunity to review that document. As of now, last week we had tabled -- or the last meeting, we had tabled any discussion on that subject. What I'd like to see happen today is that we can sort of put forth our points of interest or concern with what we discovered in the document, that we can provide either copy of those minutes or, you know, I could put together a letter inquiry to see the law directors sort of reading of what, you know, I guess how this applies to today's law. So, you know, I'd like to receive some input from the law director before going forward with making recommendations to the council, as well as I'd like to see the law as it stands now applied with the issuance of notices of violation. And I believe the mayor's been in discussion with the co-director about this as well, just to, I guess, test the law in its current state before we make recommendations. So it may -- I would believe our recommendations would at least be, you know, a month or two away from really having any sort of merit with city council at this stage. So I will open the floor to the discussion.
Just for reference point, John Paskey, law director of code enforcement, has drafted a letter together to let property managers and landlords know that they're in violation. He's going to give them -- let's see the timeline here. Let's see.
He's asking at the end of June?
End of June, okay, yeah.
Or, I mean, at move out, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Give them a chance during move out to, while they're cleaning up the buildings and such, to take them down at that time.
Beginning after move out in June of this year.
Okay. So that's when we'll start enforcing it, at this point. So we have a month before we actually start putting -- and he cites, of course, Table 230313, tables, signs in our one and our two zones, nameplate signs and identification signs. He also cites a case, which I guess you had a chance to read along the way, in terms of results where this was appealed most before, 1999. I asked Paulo Glass meeting to talk at the comprehensive plan. He points out that, he can probably tell you better than I because he probably read it quicker than I. We talked about, of course, trying to do branding at one point, but it never got down to the signage level. It got down to images, gateways. My assumption is that if we were trying to think of those in terms of gateways and making a branding of the city, that we work towards consistency of signage. I think that, to me, would be one of the issues right there, where if we start looking at signage, we start saying, we want a consistent style. What that style is, I don't know, but do we have a whole variety of shapes and sizes out there? That's where I am right now.
Okay. Other sort of first impressions?
Did you enjoy reading all the transcripts?
Well, it sounds like we haven't progressed much off of 1998, as far as the same issues, basically. Same points of interest within the discussions, I think, that people bring up. One of the things I thought was kind of interesting, when S. Locker made the aside about the ADT signs, security signs. So, you know, are those covered under that signage, or is there -- it should be, right? They should have people who are subscribers to ADT, then according to the ordinances need to take those signs down, right?
Probably so. It's an off-site business sign. It's not temporary. Again, the enforcement after this ruling, it's -- I don't think anything occurred afterwards. I don't know why it was in -- and the loop by his on zoning, what appeals, as you can tell from reading the transcripts. So the enforcement side was up to the administration at the time. It never got done.
Now, I agree that, you know, Mr. Lang should probably be consulted in regards to what we're attempting to do, as far as just reducing any type of things where we're going to run into an automatic brick wall. I think that would be helpful. I also think back to something that Nicholas said several months ago, I think, when we were discussing this, is that, I guess, in terms of ordinances or in terms of the code, the specific term for lease management is not included someplace. So I think maybe, does that need to be defined at some point before we proceed? You know, for instance, is management an acceptable term for houses that are owned by rental or real estate agencies, you know, versus the management aspect, or do we just consider that management is ownership? So I think maybe in terms of going forward too, I don't know if we need to define some terms, you know, as far as like, that should be in the code in the future to guide, you know, people looking through the codes in the future, as far, especially with any recommendations that we might make that are different.
Well, it's fairly clear, I feel, I don't know about the other commission members, from reading the legal documents, that they're not allowed, whether they're managed or owned or rented by, you know, the --
They all should be allowed.
Yeah, I mean, I saw in reading through it, there's a very key division that's made, that what's allowed is, you can advertise a company if it's in its permanent location onsite. And you can advertise a lease if it's a temporary advertisement onsite of the premise of that place it's leased. In other words, you're not allowed anything offsite altogether is disallowed. You can't have offsite a permit, you can't have an offsite temporary sign. You can only have, if it's on the premise of where the activity is to be conducted, I believe was the word. The, you know, I think the big item I have is sign duration, is what is that period of time? And we have, we're very clear on where the endpoint is, but we're, you know, not clear at all on where the start point. And that's something that, where I believe actually just the enforced, the experiment of enforcing the law might help us to find what that duration is. You know, it's, probably people aren't going to have a very good court case if they say we're leasing for 2012 and that's what our temporary sign is. But maybe through the courts, it will be determined that 60 days is an acceptable window, or, you know, 30 days. I don't know. I think we're going to just be sort of working at random, because in all my sort of research of codes that have real estate sign law, no one puts forth a duration that I can find.
But again, the concept of real estate sign is that it usually gets bought and sold at a longer frequency, periodicity, or whatever you want to call it. So it's not like you sell the house every two weeks, or quarter every year. Rental signs are a little bit different, but they're both in the same category. My interpretation, and again, and what I'm going to give marching orders is, is that if there's a lease that's two weeks old in there, or a closing that's two weeks old, the sign should come down.
Yep.
You know, and it doesn't matter what, how soon you put it back up, if you've got a lease in there two weeks old, it does come, it comes down, which in effect, if we are hearing the market being what it is, we'll never see any for rent signs. And I know that will probably have to be addressed somehow, possibly through court, but I'd rather see, my task, if you look at Title 13 of the city code, is to enforce the law as is. And that's a general interpretation of the law, but the fact is, that's what it says. It doesn't tell you when to put it back up. But still, again, the age of the lease is what's in there. And that's what I see we have to follow.
Right.
It does seem like we're either in a all full-blown rental signs all the time, you know, 365, or not at all. But that's been their claim all along, is that we're constantly leasing, constantly leasing, which is why we have such a proliferation of the signage out there.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think you have to pinpoint a time. I think that the two weeks thereafter that you can remove the sign. Now, again, legality, the question legality is going to come when they, when the sign goes back, at what, what's the safe distance from their last lease to their next lease? Again, I don't, we don't know, because they're there all the time. So we don't even know what the, you know, and that's, I also sort of wrote down, I think RJ brought this up too, is sort of what happened. You see that last part where the former co-director sort of says, "Well, you know, we're not sure if we really feel strongly about your use of the term." This is to the opponent's lawyer of reasonable time, that, you know, they'll be removed and replaced in a reasonable manner. And so I would have loved to see what they had agreed as a reasonable time, and like you said, it doesn't sound like any action really took place. Yeah, he used the --
It's from October 27.
Yeah. "John Warden decided to remove the signs after leasing the properties and for a reasonable time thereafter until the next period for advertising will commence." And that's sort of the big question what's out there. It's from the October 27, 1999 letter. And then Steve Pearson, the former director of code enforcement's response was, "You have indicated that Mr. Warden removed the signs for a reasonable time, and I will have to discuss with the former law director, Gary Hunter, how a limited reasonable period of time can be quantified before we can even consider your request." And again, I don't know if that's within our realm. Certainly we can legislate a time period, and, I mean, if everyone's saying it's a university town, we're renting all the time, then, I mean, we could propose a schedule that's really based on the university, whether it's the semester or the -- they're going to semester now, correct?
Not for not to --
Yeah, or the quarters now, and just say that's, if, you know, if this is your basis of argument, then that will be your basis of, you know, leasing, I guess. You have two weeks before the quarter starts, and two weeks after, and the sign has to go down until the next quarter.
What, in terms of reasonable time, I mean, then if we put a timetable on this, it comes back to, then you start looking and say, okay, if I have a three-bedroom house, two are leased, two bedrooms leased, that third room is empty. Where does that, where does that happen? And then who has to make the case to say that room's empty? I mean, I could just say, oh, my third room's empty there, but is the proof with the landlord? Get the citation, show us your lease, and tell us that it's only two-thirds full? Do we say that two-thirds full is --
Is the majority.
Is the majority? You know, half-empty, half-full type thing.
But the other argument that hasn't, it seemed like the Judge Goldsberry sort of avoided is, can you advertise offsite with the rental sign? I mean, even if we, if we agree it's a temporary real estate sign, can you actually advertise your business that way?
I think the assumption is, if we've got it in code where you can put a sign up as a real --
That you can have anything on it, as long as it's advertising --
And it's temporary.
Right.
Okay. I mean, essentially, I think that's a given, that we already allow the real estate signs to be there, the rental sign to be there.
Right.
It's only after the deal has been closed.
Okay.
I think, I mean, I think that's why you avoid it, because it's only, that's, the assumption is, it's allowed right now, because that's in there.
Okay.
You know, but that would be one of the questions, who's responsible for actually proving that it's empty or full? I guess that would be one side of it. We could actually make a complaint, basically, chairs. You know, that would make it even more intriguing, wouldn't it? Anybody who doesn't like the sign in front of the next door house can actually complain.
Well, we, you know, we brought this up in our discussion earlier, you know, do we make these permitted signs and not the sort of special conditions? Most city codes put these under the exemptions to permitted sign, that it's of a temporary nature, it's to the benefit of the citizens to be able to have it. But when it's not, when it's really a business, it sort of seems like a loophole in a way, that, you know, should this, how regulated should it be? Should it be permitted like most other commercial signage? Or is it, you know, really simply that real estate sign? You know, I think it's that, it's that sort of right at that line of, you know, I could see it on either side of the fence.
I don't know what other cities do, so I have to, I assume that most of them let the signs go out without a permitting process.
Yeah, like I said, most don't have a duration involved as well, because I guess it's not abused.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Any sign, I mean, any information about other university towns, how they handle similar situations?
I mean, that's what I've been looking for, and like I said, I just, I could not, I would have thought there would have been something to parallel this, but I just couldn't. You know, and I think it's the nature, this goes back to our discussion of urban code and what the city looks like as well. I think it's the nature of the neighborhoods as well. We have a lot of single-family houses that are rentals, as opposed to, you know, apartment buildings, move locks, where it'd be, you know, more discreet. I mean, even, even you look at condominiums in town, and, you know, they're represented by multiple, you know, real estate agents. So you have a lot of real estate signs in that aspect as well. But, you know, I found we were on the conservative side of what is currently in the side ordinance as far as sizes of signs go for the residential zones. But again, I could not, you know, and I think I looked at three or four examples. One would be Eugene, Oregon, another would be Madison, Wisconsin, Boulder, Colorado, Athens, Georgia, where they didn't list a duration, which, it could have just been, I wasn't reading the code well enough to, maybe it was in a separate, a separate portion, but it wasn't available. And again, it's because they were under a temporary, they were under the exemptions to permitted signs in all of them, and they were also listed as temporary signs, similar to how Athens is. So in a way, we sort of go out of, not to repeat myself, but we go out of our way in defining what that timeframe is. And again, I feel like if we were to experiment with enforcing it as is, we might be able to establish that duration a little bit better of how early these signs go back up. But if they're just always there, I don't think, it's going to be us sort of being awfully subjective determining that beginning phase.
Well, in theory, we should see a lot of signs down by the end of June.
I would think so. I mean, if it is a permanent, you know, permanent rental based on the university, I think you're going to see swings with the same, with the university schedule. I don't see why it wouldn't just follow suit.
Just one quick point, that sounds reasonable to me, but the intent, if you look at the intent of the sign regulations, which they're the same in 2010 as they are in 1998, the intent has not changed. And the very first intent, promote and maintain high-quality residential districts throughout the city, and to promote attractive public facilities by permitting only nameplate, bulletin board, and identification signs related to the development. You know, I read that intent, and it's clearly that the intent of our sign ordinance is not to have this type of sign up 365 days out of the year, or up for 30 days, down for a day, up for 30 days, et cetera. That's not the intent of our codes. So I think we're moving on the right track with trying to get them down, and then seeing, do we just want to regulate them for two weeks at a time, or something like that, in the fall or in the spring or something? So, but to me, that intent is extremely important to determining how these should be regulated.
And if I remember, temporary signs by definition are four months max, one month at a time, is that how it works?
Four months max, one month at a time.
Okay.
A day down in between those periods.
So you could see where if we were to, as you say, take these and move them out of the real estate sign level, and put them into the temporary sign section of the code, where they have to actually fill out a permit.
Right.
Give us the dates, and in theory, if, I forget, I haven't checked the recent code, do they have to have a date on the sign?
There is a part, the temporary signs for real estate, for lease and for sale.
Full out of the temporary sign.
Yeah, full under a temporary sign. The one you're talking about, the four-month period out of the year is for advertising sales, banners, special events, et cetera. So there's two different types in there. And I believe there is a section that says that the real estate signs are supposed to have a date on them as to when they were put up.
I thought the temporary ones and banners and special events.
Well, the temporary ones and the banners, we kind of know when they go up and down, so, based on when they come in. We've been getting that one pretty hard lately, so.
But you could see that the alternative is to slide it into that special event, special event being a real or a leasing.
Right.
I mean, if it's, if the market is so congested and saturated right now, that could be an effect, yes.
It would be a special event if you have an opening in here.
And only four months? Oh, we could even modify that if need be, but that's the other way to look at that. We could collect a lot of permit money, I think, for the time.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, and maybe, you know, you could convince the commissioners if the permitting money was going to be earmarked for development purposes.
Historical district.
Exactly.
This is what town seems to be about these days.
Well.
Yeah, there is.
Diming the residents.
No, 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 it's all for everybody's benefit. The other option that we could look at, that's sort of beyond the, beyond the sign ordinance is developing a standard, you know, going with, looking at the comprehensive ban, or, sorry, plan level, or closely, is there particular standards per neighborhoods that, you know, signs, placard signs can, you know, fall into, not so much just the square footage, but, you know, a look and appearance, that sort of nature, that, you know, may make the signs more, I guess, blend in with the surrounding community or character of the neighborhood.
I will let you be aware that I went to the public hearing for the historical district last night.
Okay.
There was a high concern there of actually legislating images and of style and permitting that stuff. And they were actually asking for some kind of commitment from the administration, saying we'd never do that, which I'm well aware that's not possible for any particular administration to vouch for any other administration.
Right.
I know that we were at the comprehensive plan level, which I think Paul gave you copies of. It's basically, one of the tasks is to define the city image, and we have, of course, you know, we have the sign flag right there, license tag flag, we have, you know, a certain image we have out there. Some of it gets mixed with OU. Part of the dialogue in the comprehensive plan, when I sat through there, was the idea of, do we want to try bringing out flavors within neighborhoods? But we never got down to, do you want to ratchet down to a type of sign, size of sign, shape of sign? Some cities do that. I don't know if we want to go there, but just be aware that that could possibly occur.
Right.
If we don't like the style we're seeing there, do ask them to put it into one style.
Well, I mean, we have in our, you know, signs are permitted of a very, of a certain size in a commercial district or zone, and they're, you know, a different size in a residential district or zone. So I think it's, you know, we're kind of implying a standard without actually sort of spelling it out. And, you know, I mean, as with all standards, there is no standard, and it's always sort of flexible. And, I mean, I think if we were to push that sort of concept, it, you know, would be done with a lot of public input coming up with the sign thing. You know, wouldn't it be like our state license plate, which was just chosen by the governor's wife?
I'm ready to do it, I guess.
Who knows? Is there any other comments that people would like to put into the record or have the law director look into before we bring back up the recommendation discussion?
If we're going to try to implement this by the end of June, I suspect we will not get that much data or feedback before July or Tuesday.
Before July. I suspect we'll have feedback.
Okay. So that's, we won't -- Do you expect us to have any information in terms of direction?
Send the letters and see what happens.
Okay.
I think it's the best thing to do. Try to implement what's already there, go from there.
So by the first meeting in August, we would know how?
Yeah, do you have copies of that?
No.
Do you have copies of the letter that you sent?
I got the original here, and I'm more than welcome.
But by the first meeting in August of the planning commission, we should know how, well, people have done of taking down their signs.
I just got that this morning, but that gives you an idea where we want to go. He sent it to me as a draft.
And it does state in here, the signed permit is not required for real estate and political signs, and that expiration dates are not required on either one of those as well.
Okay.
But again, part of the planning commission, we can change that if we choose to.
Well, I mean, I think, you're putting this, it sort of puts the burden on the landlord to say, no, I have a lease, or that we're looking to lease the place in the next month, or something like that is to be opened. I mean, it's the same for, I don't see how this is any different than any other violation of a homeowner. If something by a code officer is seen as being not a permitted use, and they're giving a notice of violation, the burden that is on the homeowner, so. I would find, I find it acceptable, and I think it's sort of worthwhile before we can proceed with the recommendations. So I would put a move to, again, table discussion of the sign ordinance until, to give it a little more time, August, the first meeting of August. I could say July, but I'd rather have a little, to see how much sort of give back there is.
Well, we do, council does.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second.
I'll do some favor tabling this wonderful discussion.
All right.
Any folks? Any further discussion? Okay. On the strategic planning for the next meeting, if at all possible, I'd like to have the city engineer, Andy Stone, provide a sort of an executive summary, do you think? To commission, maybe we could announce it ahead of time, maybe some citizens might attend as well.
I'll check with Andy regarding his schedule.
That'd be fine.
And I have provided all members the eight-year planning document that you --
Okay.
Right, so I'll make sure that we have that again.
Okay.
And some things will happen, some things are hopeful. I mean, it's all dependent upon funding, so.
They have our copy? Yeah, I was at that, so I got my copy.
Well, I'll get it.
I might have been the one. And again, the concept is that, and there's where we can, you know, understand the city from an infrastructure and roadway standpoint, to see where we should be encouraging growth or development, or redevelopment, revitalization, and other areas that, you know, we have to be careful with, I guess, as far as their, you know, exactly.
Capacity and limitations.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, as a point of communication, I did receive a letter from Lawyer Lavelle's office offering a donation of land, I think you probably saw it in the paper.
Over there.
Of the property off of Harmony Road, about 66 acres, requesting whether we'd be interested in using it for a fire station. It was addressed to myself, Pat Kelly, Sheriff's Department, county commissioners, and Chief Troxel. I responded to it yesterday. I wrote a letter back, said I wanted something, and a response by him first. The response was pretty much, I can't deny the determination. I shouted to council two weeks ago.
A week and a half ago, maybe?
So they have yet to even think about it as well, they would be involved in that. We have a fire response time plan being put together by GIS, Ilgarde, I believe, that is not done yet, so therefore that-- I'd hate to shoot from the hip without having that data. The chief troxel's out for a while, and I just talked with him this morning, he's going to go take a look at it and get his evaluation as well. I haven't heard from anything official from the county commissioner, Pat Kelly. Part of the issue, of course, would be actually getting utilities under the river, under 50, if it'd be worth it, as well as whether it's worth us in terms of timing and location for the fire station. So just to keep you informed on that. If you remember, a comprehensive plan talks about not going in that direction, but you have to look and say, really, the main thrust of that was not to develop in Flood Plain to the east. This is outside of the Flood Plain. You know, the-- That's why I really want to count-- This is why I bring it up, just so there's better other minds, better minds involved in this, if you think we ought to be looking at that closer, or even assisting in any development in that direction. And I say that because if we choose not to do it, and the county commissioners decide, sheriff's department, for instance, then it becomes an issue of annexation in, is that going to go?
Sure.
What do we want to do? And how do we want to do that?
Could you provide the commission with--
Letter?
Or somewhere where we could identify that parcel?
We're actually-- The mayor and I just spoke about that this morning.
Okay.
I'll be putting something together for council. I'll make sure to provide it to--
I mean, it could just be a simple sort of a close enough address that we can pinpoint it, just to get a better sense.
We can do that.
Okay. Any other communications? Okay, moving right along, we have our reports from the city planner and director of Code Enforcement. Who would like to begin?
I can start, I just have two key points for today. As the mayor stated last night, the Near East Side Neighborhood Association hosted a public meeting in conjunction with the State of Ohio Historic Preservation Office. They've been working for the last eight or nine years, maybe longer, to identify all the historic homes in the Elmwood area on the east side, and have applied for that specific district to be registered on the National Register of Historic Districts. They had a required, a mandatory meeting last night as part of that process. There's kind of a general feeling from some people at the meeting that there was, that there wasn't enough notice given to people that would be impacted potentially by the establishment of this district. So we're probably going to have a second meeting that the city might host within the next three weeks, in order just to-- The neighborhoods would do their part to get the outreach done, and the city would try to do some PR to let people know that there'll be a meeting, and then the Near East Side Neighborhood Association will conduct the meeting about the impacts of establishing this district. So that would be something that you folks may want to be involved with. We're, would more or less just be hosting, not running the meeting. The city's Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee is almost completed with its report that we are required to provide to city council and to the planning commission. We'll have-- Our goal is to have an executive summary ready for the June 29 Town Hall meeting that we can provide to the public, and then we'll be presenting presentations to city council and to the planning commission likely in July. So we've been working on that for over two years now, and it's almost done. That's all I've got. Yes, mayor?
Let me add that the actual determination of the historic district will be till July 16th, I think.
Correct.
Okay.
That's when the state-- Yeah, the state will have-- The state will make their determination as to whether it falls within the parameters of the-- Federal Department of the Interior's National Preservation List, yeah.
And they have sent me a map of the location, I think, and I forget-- I just got it this morning, I shouted to you just after you got up here. We'll probably try putting that on our city website, so other people can look at it, it's a PDF file. I think there's the application itself as a PDF, so if we have a value, we'll be working off the same data. Of course, there is, if you have an objection, you have problems with, there is a time to do that for the July 16th date. So I'm aware of that. If you're talking about the Comprehensive Advisory Committee review, are they going-- Is that going to be a finished product by the 29th? Is that what you're saying?
That's what we're trying for.
Okay.
We're pretty close right now.
And I think that one of the conversations we had between us was putting a CD-ROM together, would that be something put on a CD-ROM?
Yeah.
Conceptually, the idea is put that pedestrian bike plan on some kind of format people can get at the Town Hall meeting, and maybe this would be part of it, too. Although it'd be kind of jumping the gun if we're not represented to, you know, represented to city council before that.
Something to discuss.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the-- John?
I'm just going to say, next Tuesday evening, 7:00 in this room, there's a BZA case that you may want to watch or attend, that reflects a little bit of our recent B2D, B3 zoning case.
When is that?
It's for the former Blue Gator building, requesting to get a variance for a restaurant again, so.
Okay, this is 7:00, June 8th, Tuesday here.
Correct.
Now, variances are only per property owner, they're not transfer--
They are transferable.
--to the next property owner.
They do transfer.
They do? Okay.
Yeah, they will.
So if the use were to change, then they would have to apply for a variance again?
If the use were to change.
But if it were to stay the same, and they were already granted variance, it would-- From the previous owner, it would--
The previous building did not have a variance, it was grandfathered--
Oh, okay.
And it was vacant for over a year, which therefore renders any of that useless.
Oh, I see, okay. That's, I-- Yeah, I was curious about that case, thank you.
Yes, it does a non-conformal use for over a year, it lapses.
Okay.
And again, this has to do with the B2D change, and it's up for a variance. These are two mechanisms to make this a viable--
To be clear, they're still in B3.
Correct.
And that's what they'll be going before.
Well, that's why they need to receive a variance.
Correct.
If they were in B2D--
Well, I believe because of the fact that it's been-- It has not been operated, there's no-- The operations haven't been conducted in greater than a year, they would still be required.
Right, but if it were-- If city council had agreed to rezone at B2D, they would not need a variance for the set purpose.
Just for parking.
It would not have needed a variance for parking, because it's a business use--
It's because of the fact that it's in a B3, and, like you said, it elapsed, the non-conformal use.
So yes, it would have been permissible as a B2D.
So it's setback in parking requirements, 37 parking spaces?
That's about what I estimated, yes.
Yeah.
And that is it.
All right, thank you, John. Any questions? The-- Don't have any citizens in attendance today, other than the ones who've gone here. The announcements and other business, our first item is that our next meeting is planned for June 16, 2010. I will not be in attendance, so I'll bet RJ will be able to chair that meeting in June 16. You know, maybe we might consider-- Unless-- If there's no cases planned for that meeting, we might consider canceling that, so let's, in a week, sort of determine that. Any other announcements?
Hold the Town Hall meeting.
Hold the Town Hall meeting on 29th. If we don't have a 16th meeting, June 29th is Town Hall meeting. 6:30, I believe, is that it? Or 6?
6:30.
6:30.
Okay, if there's no other announcements, dispositions of the last meeting, just minutes, should be attached to your--
Right.
If you had a chance to review those. I believe we're all in attendance, so everyone can vote.
I-- The only one I want to see change is, it looks like I moved to accept the minutes and I seconded. I don't know who seconded, and I abstained since I wasn't there, and you weren't there, but I'm looking at that, I don't know how--
Move and second.
I'm handy, but not that handy. So, I-- Again, I'd have to go back, I don't remember who did the seconding on this.
Yeah, I'm not sure-- I know it was at this meeting, so I'm not sure how I abstained.
You weren't there.
No, I was--
Meaning you abstained for the previous meeting, you feel--
Oh, that's what was, that's correct. Yes, that would be--
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, also, I was drawn, that's where--
All right, I'm going to leave that to-- I have faith that Charlie will be able to figure that one out and sort it out.
That's not why he abstained.
Because I seconded quite--
No, I mean--
You had enough voting, you couldn't--
A little power hungry, but not that power hungry.
All right. Any other corrections? Move that we accept the minutes from last meeting?
So moved.
All right, all those favor?
All right.
Any votes? Okay, if there's no further discussion on the planning commission's meeting for the day, it is so adjourned.
Yeah, it's adjourned.